I'll call this meeting in order.
Here.
Karen?
Here.
Here.
Put down the pledge.
I release you to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, discussion of possible approval of minutes for the November 25th.
Oh, I might have to approve.
I'll second.
Zach?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Item four, discussion of possible action on reports from the emergency management director, Grady County Fire Department, safety director, and construction superintendent. Dell?
FYI, Kim said she didn't have anything really ready for y'all, so she wasn't going to do that. She asked, supposed to go to an okay first, weather committee meeting is Thursday, but Amanda Sopen has taken a turn for the worse. And so he is not doing real well at all. So she's going to stay home, she's going to do the EPOs and stuff like that that I need and all that. But it gets constant care and this is where it's really changing. So I'm really good, but anyway, I'll be on my way to start in front of the office so we can get ready for next week. And Mike's projecting itself, so that's really important.
All right, thank you Dell. Bobby?
Well, great, Tommy had no report of injury, so motor vehicle accidents. I have conducted a safety meeting with our election board in District One and we'll also conduct one with District Three this week. I also have a make-up meeting with one of District Two's employees. I also am working with the departments on updating any disaster recovery plans and for 2025 and reviewing our drug and alcohol policies if there's been any changes. I had a color code, emergency contact information, we knew all the sheriff and Dell, and there were no changes made to that. So this morning I talked to District One with the email that I got from LTAP. They're in partnership with ARDA, which is American Road and Transportation Builders Association. They're presenting a 10-hour construction course training with providing information for an OSHA T-10 card. Once this course has been completed, I send an email to all the barns if they wanted to send some of their guys. I think it'd be a great thing, is training us to identify hazards and a lot of great information there. I missed some more boxes from the courts clerk the week before last, two or five, so we got some more of that stuff moved from the courts clerk's office. So that's it I have for you guys. If you have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Bobby. Mike?
I don't have much. They're going to finish up that bathroom addition at Allen Fire Station this week. And that will be the last of the ARDA, I believe, for her. And then we're going to start that plumbing next Monday in emergency management. Trying to do maybe three weeks of being down over there, but I don't know until they get it open. See what it looks like, but everybody is scheduled back to back to back, so try to keep it. That's quick.
Done with it.
I don't know until they get in here.
All right. Thank you, sir. Item five, public comments. Joe?
Yeah. Backed up, um, category 440, which has been blocked off by the police. Y'all sent out a letter three months ago telling him, my neighbor, he had stuff out of roadway. I've got pictures here to show you exactly what's happened. And in fact, he's increased the amount of garbage he's got in the roadway.
Most of the way since they got the water, they let these heavy equipment, but you can't just go move.
As you see, I'm marking the pictures there, it's, I can't get them. Y'all gave him 90 days to get it cleaned up, he's not done a thing. And I did call the county sheriff out there, they went back to try to talk to him. The old man said, well, my wife handles that, but she's not here. So he said, well, tell her to contact the commission's office. I don't know that he's contacted, you don't doubt it. So I need somebody to come out there and get this stuff. It's, I have no authority because that is not actually my property. So I think just have this stuff moved and y'all have the authority to get it done, I don't.
You've been trying to get on the property since August.
Yeah, I bought the property in July, not been able to get on it twice. And after I got on there, I was putting the whole stuff that's put out there. Right there on the fence is the posting and picture of your letter to them.
All right, Charles?
Here.
Okay, so, well, this is what they, this is more pictures, Charles.
I'm just looking for help to get this thing done, I don't know how, where to go next.
How much property do you have?
I got about little four acres there. I got it from the Turnback Authority, so it was, the road was open, I came in here and to y'all, and got, y'all opened up the roadway, but as soon as y'all moved the roadway, I heard we started throwing crap down.
And I left here and went and spoke with the sheriff about it as soon as that meeting was finished. And he was going to go out and look at it, and then he was going to get with Charles, but I'm not sure that that, that he got with Charles. So, and this is, he said this was the first time he had seen this, I showed it to him this morning, so.
Do you have an attorney?
I have an attorney. Got a new suit.
Wow, really? It's a thought.
Well, the question I've got, y'all ever, uh, the road folks, I just need this stuff picked up and gate taken down. That's all I need.
So you're being denied that egress to the property?
That's right.
And, uh... What, did you buy from him?
Pardon?
Did you buy this from him?
No, I bought it from the Turnback Authority. It's just, he had a piece of property just this side where the Turnback Authority opened. And they decided that that was their property, because they paid for it, so they're going to make sure nobody gets on it.
We have another neighbor there right across from us that wants that road open too. They've been trying to get it open.
Have you opened it up in August?
Yep, August 26th.
Yeah, 90 days was the 24th of November.
Okay, let me see. Let me see. That's all I can say right now until I can dig into it, so.
I guess I got the feedback, because I, I started it almost six months before I ever got on my property.
Yeah, I understand.
The cat was a thing.
I mean, certainly, you could... I'll, uh... TRO.
TRO doesn't move the stuff out of my way, though.
No, we didn't give a cool order to do it. No, it does, I understand, and I'm just trying to get us to where we can be. Let me see. Is this in the code?
Yeah, it's okay, it's where the section line is, which for me, roadway 16 feet each side, right? Is made right in the section line. And therefore, I can, I could actually come in on the south side, get into my neighbor's property and push him to show if he took the gate down. But I can't get on my property because he's got these cement pylons right in there, and no one's going to lift that, he brought in heavy-duty equipment with this stuff.
Put it in there. Are these things in the road?
Yes. What was that opened up as a road, yes? Yes.
Oh, that's good. Looking good.
And it is a section line, for what difference it makes? I mean, it's on a county section line, it's not a...
And an approved road.
Yes.
One that we've adopted. We've made it green on the map. All right?
I don't know if ODOT's open, or is updated the map to show that?
Have we, have we processed paperwork to ODOT? We went to this dance before, if you recall, with the mayor commissioner. Did this, has it been sent over to the...
Not, to my knowledge.
Okay.
I went to the county sheriff's place, and I got an address for the place, but we're still at loss.
Probably need to be sure that all the requirements to get an ODOT-approved road have been exercised.
It needs to show on the ODOT map.
I want it, I want it to. I mean, just, if we're going to adopt a road...
I don't remember, I don't recall signing any action, any county action form. It's in the pro dot, I don't recall voting on that or signing that.
Because that, not, we're taking a basic step, we have not finished. And it's the same kind of problem that we've had, if you recall, with other roads that ended up causing problems for the local commissioners.
Oh.
If you'll recall.
Is it green?
It has not been updated on the ODOT map yet.
Well, that means the paper offended.
It just needs a county action report voted on.
Whatever, whatever the process is, okay, we approved it, let's get that done. That gives me more power and authority to take, for me to take action. We're not finished. And you can't do it on this, at this point.
It has to be its own agenda.
We need to have it separate agenda, you can put it next week. Okay, uh, yeah. Couple more steps. Couple more steps that we have to do.
The 26th is one, or 26th of August, vote on it, 20, it's over to 24, 90 days, so 24.
Okay.
And there was a reservation on the sign.
Show me, we need a resolution.
There's a resolution, it just needs a county action report sent to, yeah, that's all it needs, is a county action report sent.
Whatever's required.
Yeah, it's just, it just needs a cash, if one vote is on.
Then it's our road.
Submitted to ODOT, and it'll be ours.
Right now, almost, but...
Put it on the agenda next week.
You just got the resolution. Oh, okay. Oh, all right, all right. It's in this paper. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Item six, good business. Item seven, discussion of possible approval or disposals for OSU in accordance with the provision set forth in Title 19, 6421. I will make that motion to approve. Safety. What is a disposal? Uh, it looks like computers. Oh, okay, okay. Item 11 was... Yeah, it looks like.
Yeah, it's all Dell stuff, so.
Safety.
Zach?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
I don't know what that would be.
That's the lady that called, and I think that's the one that's causing issues.
Here?
That's my understanding of it, they're the ones that are probably...
Oh. Okay, we didn't know that. Item eight, discussion of possible approval of request from the city of Chickasha for the overlay of Cottonwood Road 1390 east of railroad track to Simms Road in reference to the interlocal agreement signed April 22nd, 2024, and amended May 6th, 2024.
I would like to take the map.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Second.
Zach?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Yes.
Item nine, discussion of possible approval of the sale of Grandland Properties LLC for TID number 8672, parcel ID 0000-21-07-NW7W-3-012-00.
This is obvious, and then we're in part of Chickasha.
It don't bump anything we own, does it?
No, I do not know. I don't know, they own a lot. Matt, who was separated, own a lot over there. I don't know. I can find out.
I should want to sell it, and then we try to buy it. Have to try to buy it back for 10 grand.
Right.
I don't know, is there a way to... Do you feel... Is there a way to, what road, what street is off of, I guess?
Uh, not by that, Zach, I can go though to the assessors office and mapping and have them to, to check if any of it bumps up to anything the county owns, and, and the street as well.
I don't know, I kind of think I don't want to do that.
That's fine, I can, I can get that information and then just do it. So next week, you said?
Like motion table?
Sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion table.
Yeah, I'll get that information before you have it at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Many parking lots there someday.
Karen?
Many parking lots.
Yeah, yeah.
Item 10, discussion of possible approval of utility pipeline, road crossing permits, water line, fast line permits, and driveway 10-horned front mets. Kim?
You know, I don't have any previous proof.
All right. Item 11, discussion of possible approval of blanket purchase orders. I'll make that motion to approve. Safety. Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 12, when new purchase orders generated by the Grady County governing bodies during the current and previous months are authorized or denied payments of such purchase orders.
We only have two. One, both of them are burdened, senior citizen. Uh, invoice stated before the PO. One person running the center was killed. I made them send in paperwork, $63.90. And the second one, burdened senior citizen, blanket PO was exceeded by $638.98. Health insurance is blue cross and blue shield. Would that be? Health insurance, blue cross and blue shield on...
Did that carry you or...
I don't know what the...
Zach?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Item 13, discussion of possible approval of county officer monthly reports. I will make that motion to approve. Thank you.
Zach?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Item 14, discussion of possible approval of estimate of need to request for appropriations and transfer appropriations. No action? For five of A for officials. Assuming that there's probably going to be all officials that show up for the opening.
Get Gary's out.
It's kind of early, like 11, but it wouldn't have been open this early. I think we're record tallying.
I sent, I sent the, the link over to, uh, Randy. I sent, I sent the, uh, the link over to, uh, uh, rank. And so you can just click on that link and you can register yourself as soon as you want. I would be, because, and there's two locations, one in Tulsa and one in the city.
Just in time.
Sometimes you don't check, you see. Could you send me a copy of that? Did you already change your?
I haven't done it yet. Do you want me to wait until after the first day or are you gonna do it now?
You can wait, I mean, if, if you wanna.
I didn't know what you wanted me to do.
Cause any changes that needed to be made.
Okay.
To the first of the year, I was gonna go ahead and make.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and just update it and send it to you then.
Okay.
Okay?
Did you get all that stuff?
The storage is cleaned out. So it's empty and.
I'm sorry I didn't tell you.
It's okay. It's okay, we got it all done. Help wise, why? Mine was. No.
Probably a couple of weeks section, I don't know that. I can start or wait on Gary.
You might miss a little bit if you start.
Yeah.
Did you say three?
I would, I would, I would, like you would. I'll figure it too. I'm gonna start without him.
All right, um, these systems, these systems enable the entities people to obtain and use information necessary to conduct, manage, and control operations. Number one, are all officials made aware of their budget for the fiscal year?
Yes.
Yes.
Number two, is information readily available to all officials regard, regarding their budgetary and cash balances on appropriation ledger and general ledger?
Yes.
Number three, is information obtained at the association meetings brought to the quarterly meetings and shared with all offices?
Kind of what this meeting is about, so.
Okay.
Is there anything from Echo that y'all want to? Tell about or anything?
Had the nine one one deal about consolidation of the nine one ones, there's under that. About it. Four.
Cindy, she's always in your race.
Yeah, Cindy is always there as you watch. Is information obtained at FEMA kickoff meetings shared with those responsible for the financial reporting and monitoring of compliance for federal funds?
I don't, I don't know anything about that.
I don't know either.
Any more, any more meetings do you have?
That would be one deal. I mean, I get, I've got emails, but we haven't had any, uh, FEMA projects.
Item five, are formal channels of communication established countywide to relay decisions and internal controls or responsibilities?
I think we all, we're pretty much in our office with different variations. Everybody does the same thing.
All right. The next one is monitoring, the internal control process must be monitored and changed by management as circumstances and conditions necessitate. Number one, are periodic meetings held to address items that should be included in the handbook and determine the county's meeting of goals and objectives? Are we done by every office independently?
Well, if we have, if we have a handbook item, we usually let all officials know and then bring it to the board to change on the handbook.
Does it show up in red too, if there's any changes?
When Echo, when they redo their handbook, it won't show up in red with what their changes. It won't show up in our red, but we usually bring it up to the board.
Number two, is someone other than the preparer formally designated to ensure the financial statement required disclosures and supplemental info, information of the county is reviewed for accuracy and completeness and compared with the prior financial statements?
Say that again.
Is someone other than the preparer formally designated to ensure the financial statement required disclosures and supplemental information of the county is reviewed for accuracy and completeness and compared with the prior financial statements?
Yes.
Yes. Number three, is someone other than the preparer formally designated to ensure the C F A and required disclosures of the county is reviewed for accuracy and completeness and compared with the prior C F A? Number four, is someone formally designated to ensure the county's estimated needs is reviewed for accuracy and completeness?
Yes.
Number five, determine audit findings are corrected.
Yes.
Number six, periodically review budgeted amounts to actual amounts and result unexplained variances.
Yes.
Number seven, ensure employees understand expectations and meanings, the goals of the county.
Yes.
Number eight, determine source of complaint and course of action for resolution. Assuming so. Number nine, does each official perform a periodic evaluation of internal controls designed for their office?
Yes.
The last thing, um, was start putting together a county auction again since it's been twenty twenty-four since we had one. Does everybody have enough stuff that could you do to a county auction or is that, would that be a waste of time?
I don't, I don't really have anything.
We jucked all ours cause nobody wanted it.
It might be a waste of time this year, then put it off till next year. All right, that's all I got. That's all.